I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. President, item number one.
I'll make a motion to approve item number one. On the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item one on the agenda for the minutes of the January 9th, 2019 meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, item two.
Make a motion to recess the commissioners' meeting and open the salary board, and it's still not open.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to recess commissioners' meeting and open the salary board. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have an extra pencil or pen? Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy.
Okay, item one.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 9th.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Treasurer Miller, to approve the minutes of the January 9th, 2019 salary board. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number two.
I make a motion to approve item number two is listed on the agenda?
Motion by Treasurer Miller, signed by Commissioner Warren, to remit position of First Deputy Tax Fund Director/Office Manager effective February 13, 2019. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, item three.
I'll make a motion to approve, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve item number three is listed on the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Treasurer Miller, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item three, to create a full-time non-union position, First Deputy Treasurer, Tax Claimant, Salary of $35,000, around 40 hours a week, six months probation, no benefits, going to the county policy manual, effective February 13th, per recommendation of Treasurer Jason Miller. Questions or comments?
Who's the person in that position?
There is nobody in that position right now.
So you're looking for one?
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, item four.
Make a motion to approve item number four is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item four on the agenda, to amend the motion to create a part-time temporary position in real estate civil criminal clerk, extending its duration through June 30th, 2019, no change in pay, no more than three days per week, no benefits per recommendation of Sheriff Lance Bondic. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make sure the minutes reflect that Lance Bondic was absent. Any public comment on the salary board? Here number five.
Make a motion to close the salary board at 9:03.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to close the salary board and return to the commissioners' meeting at 9:03. All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Treasurer, I wonder if we can get him to. Item number three.
I'll make a motion to recess the commissioners' meeting and open the election board meeting, still 9:03.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to recess commissioners' meeting and open the election board meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Election board meeting, item number one, called order at 9:04, members are present. Item number three.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
You can't do that.
I want to approve the 12th.
Okay, I make a motion to approve item number three on the agenda?
I'll second that. Motion to approve the minutes of September 12th. And we'll have to do the September 6th, wait on it. September 6th.
September 6th.
November 12th, you were at that one. So the 6th is the one that, we've got to split these apart. Okay. I need you to rescind your motion.
Okay, I rescind my motion on item number three?
All right, thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the September 12th meeting, which all three of us are up.
I'll second that.
So I made the motion, Commissioner Warren, seconded it. Okay, September 12th minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 6th election board meeting.
I'll second that. Questions or comments on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item number four.
I make a motion to approve item number four on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item four on the agenda, to approve a temporary polling place change for Gibson Township from the Gibson Township Building, South Gibson, PA, to the South Gibson United Methodist Church, Uniondale, PA, starting for the May 21st, 2019 primary election until further notice, per the request of the Gibson Township Supervisors and Macy Rudock, Director of Elections Voter Registration. This is, change complies with ADA regulations. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Any public comment on the election board?
I guess I have my comment first, about the, about the minutes of the November 6th. The election was held on the 6th, is that correct?
Yes, it was the morning of the 6th, that's what it was.
And there was a meeting held that I was not at, which I find hard to believe because I'm on the Board of Elections and this is an advertised meeting, I guess. I don't know why, why wasn't I here? I wasn't part of this?
You were out on the road someplace. And there wasn't a meeting, there was a...
It says it was a meeting.
You called a meeting, it wasn't really a meeting, it was a...
Emergency meeting, it had stickers. I think you were at Conservation, actually. I think you were at a meeting in Conservation down on the hill.
Any other questions? I guess. It was in regards to the issue you brought up about the I voted stickers.
I know, but I just don't know why I wasn't here or knew that it was actually a meeting, meeting, because it wasn't an advertised meeting.
It wasn't an advertised meeting, it wasn't a meeting, meeting.
Well then, there shouldn't be minutes from it.
There shouldn't be minutes from it. So, we need to rescind that. There is no minutes from that. There was no meeting on the 6th. So we need to make a motion to rescind that meeting minutes of the 6th, November 6th.
I'll make a motion to rescind the minutes of November 6th from the discussion.
All right. I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
So carried, any other public comment? Item number six?
One second. At what point will you be, sorry, at what point will you be appointing a new election board position?
And the requirement is, is that when we file our petitions, we're required to stand down and pardon a new election board. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I guess I didn't answer a motion to close that meeting. I need a motion to...
No move.
Second that.
Commissioner Arnold, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we can go back to the regular meeting now.
What time do you have?
What? Okay, commissioners' meeting's back in order, item four.
Make a motion to approve item number four is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item four on the agenda, to approve or to ratify the cash distribution of electronic payments. Questions or comments? Yes.
I see a payment on the bottom for $1,500 for tower lease.
Yep.
What, which tower is that?
It's one of the towers that we have, that's Hickory Dam.
This is for what, cell phones?
No, it's for our 911 service.
Oh, for 911. So you have to pay that how often, that $1,500?
A month.
Oh, it is?
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number five.
I'll make a motion to approve item number five with the following changes. Commissioner Arnold's going to CCAP Spring Conference, that's March 24th, 25th, 26th, in Harrisburg, and the total cost is $468 plus mileage. Okay. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item five on the agenda with the stated changes. Questions or comments?
What is CCAP? Can you explain that?
County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, it's training for commissioners. All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item number six?
Make a motion to approve item number six is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item six, to ratify and approve termination of Kelsey Cobb from the part-time position of Corrections Officer, per recommendation of Warden Mark Shell. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, item seven.
Make a motion to approve item number seven is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item seven on the agenda, to ratify and approve termination of Rachel Hanson from the part-time position of Corrections Officer, per the recommendation of Warden Mark Shell. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, item number eight.
I'll make a motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item eight on the agenda, ratify and approve transfer of Macy Rudock from the position Assistant Director of Elections Voter Registration, full-time, non-union position of Director of Elections Voter Registration, salary of $35,000, around 40 hours per week. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, number nine.
Make a motion to approve item number nine on the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item nine, to ratify and approve the hiring of Amanda Maffett Thompson to the Open Union Eligible Position of Part-Time Corrections Officer, per the recommendation of Warden Mark Shell. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item ten.
Make a motion to approve item number 10 is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 10 on the agenda, to ratify extending Carissa Chamberlain in the part-time temporary position of real estate civil criminal clerk through June 30th, 2019. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, item eleven.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 11 on the agenda?
I'll second that. Yeah, a motion by Commissioner Arnold, signed by Commissioner Hall, to appoint Lauren Salzman-Demick to complete the unexpired term that place, which will expire January 1st, 2020, on the Susskana County Planning Commission, effective February 13th, per the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Questions or comments?
Don't terms usually expire December 31st of the year?
Well, it'd be January 1st, they serve until there's a new appointment. Yes.
I'd like to know, you're appointing somebody, was there any public discussion about this person? At any other meetings, any public feedback? And you're appointing someone, I understand three people came forward that were interested in this position. And was there any public discussion about you wanting to appoint now Mr. Salzman?
Yes, the Planning Commission was the ones that reviewed this, they interviewed the candidates, Planning Commission discussed it in their Planning Commission meeting, and then made a recommendation to the commissioners.
And what about discussion here in the county commissioners' meeting, so public can give some feedback, and not just a recommendation by the Planning Commission?
The feedback should have been given at the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the commissioners.
So I want to just say that I would like you to reconsider, because Lauren Salzman has several videos out and movies where he promotes the industry. And he promotes the industry, he has particular bias for the gas industry. And he has, he's endemic, he has spoken out against people who have bad water. He has spoken, even though his neighbors have bad water, he even himself has a filtration system. And he has given negative feedback to these people, even though the DEP has confirmed their contamination. And he's been part of groups like Dimic Proud, Enough Already, where he has specifically maligned those who have water issues. I consider him particularly biased for the industry. And to have someone like that on the Board of the Planning Commission, I really object, I would like you to reconsider someone else. That's, we have enough gas industry development here, to have someone who is totally for it, he promotes it in movies, he promotes it in videos. He is, he is not, this is like a conflict of interest. He works for the industry, or has worked for the industry. This is something that needs to be reconsidered, and I wish you would reconsider this. We have other people that are not with that kind of a bias, that are more neutral.
You done?
Yes.
Okay, so first of all, this appointment comes from the Planning Commission. We as commissioners have established that we will not handpick people and put them on committees, which has happened in the past, which creates all kinds of controversy of people being handpicked by commissioners. The Planning Commission interviewed people, put the person forward that they felt best suited, what the Planning Commission is trying to accomplish, which is to take and abide by all the subdivision rules and bring the expertise that they do. Their personal opinion, their personal bias, or whatever that case may be, is not relevant in this situation. We don't care what the person's personal belief is, we care what their actions are when they sit on this Board. And this Board will hold them accountable if they take and bring a personal agenda to it. So with that...
I just want to, I just want to say another, I just want to say also...
You're done. Your turn, go ahead.
Okay. I just want to say that while I value the input from the Board in the, of the Commission, I have, in the 15 years that I've been here, never seen this happen before. First of all, that someone comes forward so quickly, I think that one of the, one of the people came forward a year and a half ago and asked two commissioners if there was an opening to be considered for it. I just want transparency as to what I know. And what I was told is two, two commission members went and asked two other people to come forward to put their name in. I don't know if that's true or not, I don't know how that works. I don't know what happened, I wasn't there. I don't know of us ever interviewing, not us per se, but the Commission ever interviewing before. And I believe that that was requested by a Commissioner, that they do the interviews, and I don't know if that's true either. I'm just stating what was told to me. So, my vote will be no, but not based on what the values of what the Commission members are, or who the people are, or anything. It's just how it went about. I don't think that I was kept in the loop. I asked on Monday for the resumes of the three people to look at, and I wasn't giving those, and I'm told at 8:35 this morning that there were no resumes, it was just an interview. Had I known, I would have liked to have been a file on the wall, to sit in the interview, in the back, and just listen. So, that's all I have to say.
Well, then let me go on to make a few comments then, if you're going to share that. It has been a known fact in this county that people have an employee here placed on committees because they know commissioners, or they're friends of commissioners, and that stopped when I came here. We do not appoint friends and relatives to committees and people that were trying to take in wine and dine and to get some type of pat on the back because we appointed them. That has stopped. Farm Bureau, the Grange, other people, make recommendations for those people sitting on Conservation. The commissioners don't pick who they are, we take recommendations and we use those recommendations. This information has been available. Any Commissioner could have walked across the street at any time, met with the Planning Director, met with the Commission, at any time and had a conversation. This is not a surprise in any means, it's been known about for months, and that's how it ends. With that, I'll take the vote.
Well, let me say something, please.
Go ahead.
I did not recommend anybody, I don't know what you're saying, commissioners said, two commissioners put names forward or something like that?
I didn't say that.
You didn't say that? She didn't say? All right, that's how I took it, I'm sorry. Okay, so I did talk to the Director. Come where, come on in. Have a seat. And they were having a hard time coming up with names. Some people did come forward, and they were interviewed by the Board, and it was my understanding, that's how it happens, that the Board interviews. And I'm backing the Board, they're volunteer members, and it's my understanding that Mr. Salzman was chosen because he has an engineer background, an engineer degree, he has a background in that. So I thought that was a good fit, that's all I can say.
All in favor?
Have you seen his resume?
All in favor.
Have you seen his resume?
You're done, Vera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close?
Aye.
Item number 12.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 12 is listed on the agenda. Kingsley, that's close. Okay, I'll second that.
Go ahead. Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 12, to appoint Lori Moore of Kingsley to the Susskana County Industrial and Commercial Development Authority. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You need to go back to that previous motion. And there is an error, it is not January 1st, you are right, state dated December 31st. So I need a motion to amend that motion, to change the date to expire on December 31st.
I'll make a motion to amend the date to December 31st.
And what's the year?
2019.
And that's all we're left with, huh?
Just change the date. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 13.
Make a motion to approve item number 13 is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 13 on the agenda, accept with regret the resignation of Captain Peyton Graves, in position of face worker two, effective February 22nd, 2019. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 14.
Make a motion to approve item number 14 is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 14, accept with regret the resignation of Anthony Consero from the position of material sword, effective February 22nd, 2019. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 15.
Make a motion to approve item number 15 is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 15 on the agenda, to approve the hiring of Marjorie Perry of Halsted, the Open Full-Time Union Position, Union Eligible Position of Assistant Director of Elections Voter Registration, effective February 28th. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 16.
Make a motion to approve item number 16 is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 16 on the agenda, to approve the purchase of service agreement with United Charities Incorporated, United Children's Homes Incorporated, West Hazelton, PA. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 17.
Make a motion to approve item number 17 is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 17 on the agenda, to enter an agreement with Children's Services Center of Wyoming Valley, Wilkes-Barre, PA, for children's welfare services at a per diem rate. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 18.
Make a motion to approve item number 18 is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 18 on the agenda, to enter an agreement with the Institute of Human Resources and Services Incorporated, Kingston, PA, for child welfare services. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 19.
Make a motion to approve item number 19 is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 19, to enter an agreement with George Junior Republic, Preventative Aftercare Incorporated, Grove City, PA, for child welfare services. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 20.
Make a motion to approve item number 20 is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 20 on the agenda, to enter an agreement with Co-Prep of White Deer Run, Pittsburgh, PA, for child welfare services. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 21.
Make a motion to approve item 21 on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item 21 on the agenda, to enter an agreement with Adelphia Village Incorporated of Trope, PA, for child welfare services. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 22.
Make a motion to approve item number 22 is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 22 on the agenda, to enter an agreement with Avanco International in Clifton, Virginia, for upgrade of the adoption, foster care analysis, and reporting system in the amount of $472.05. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 23.
Make a motion to approve item number 23 is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item number 23 on the agenda, sign contract, or to sign county of Lackawanna Resolution 180261, adopting the provider agreement with Endless Mountains Extended Care for the Department of Human Services. Lackawanna Susskana Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs, effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 24.
Make a motion to approve item number 24 is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 24, to approve an agreement with MCM Consulting Group Incorporated to complete the commodity flow study for a fee of $10,850, $850 per the recommendation of the Director of Public Safety, Bruce Butler. Questions or comments? Yes.
Can you explain what that is, for $10,000, almost $11,000?
Yeah, commodity flow study gives us an idea of the different types of commodities that are going through our county, either by rail or by truck.
So what commodities do go through our county, by rail or truck?
There's everything that goes through. There's chemicals, there's food, there's products, there's everything. It's just trying to get a handle on how much of what is going through.
And you need a study for that? And what's the, the purpose for it? What are you trying to find out?
Well, it helps us to, to help create our hazard mitigation plan if we know that certain substances are coming through, so the hazard mitigation plan can be upgraded to cover those substances that are coming through the counties.
Any hazardous materials coming through on the rails, through New Milford?
Well, there's always. There's all kinds of chemicals that are on rail cars that go through New Milford all the time. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 25.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 25 is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 25, to adopt an agreement with MCM Consulting Group Incorporated for consulting services to maintain the 2018 Hazard Mitigation Plan for Susskana County for a fee of $10,350 per year for four years, for a total of $41,400, per the recommendation of the Director of Public Safety. Questions or comments?
So is that an addition to the other $10,800?
Yes, it is.
So this is another $10,350 to consult about mitigation, hazard mitigation?
No, it's to continue the updating and the continuing update of the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
So what did they do this past year? Have they been working this past year?
Yeah, they created, they created the document, the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which was just adopted last year, and now it's putting them on retainer to update it yearly so that it does not become a static document, it becomes a working document. And it's updated.
And what, can you explain anything new that was considered a new hazard that we have to be aware of, that needs to be mitigated?
The biggest one is flash flooding. That's the biggest one. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 26.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 26 is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 26 on the agenda, to enter an administrative entity operating agreement with Lackawanna Susskana BEIDEI program for conducting the administrative functions of the consolidated CMS Person-Family Directed Support and Community Living waivers for prospective waiver participants and waiver participation participants, and the purpose of conducting the initial level of care, evaluation of prospective waiver participants for consolidate community living and adult autism waivers. and adult autism waivers.
Wow, that's a mouthful.
Yeah, it is a mouthful.
And what is it actually saying? Can we?
Angela?
It has to do with the waiver programs, to do with intellectual disability, early intervention and behavioral health. And it's an ongoing thing. This is a new agreement that starts March first, so obviously our other one is February twenty-eighth that expires.
Is this state mandated?
Yes.
And then do we have any, like, group homes here? Are they referring to?
We have.
I don't know very many group homes.
I don't know of any group homes. I think that Keystone Opportunities is looking to come into Susquehanna County with group homes. They have them, I think, in Wyoming County right now.
So they're looking for what sites to put a group home in?
You have to be licensed to be able to do that, so there's a lot of work to be done before you can actually look for a site. You have to be approved to be able to do it.
So there is some kind of concerted effort to do that in this county?
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-seven.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-seven, it's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to sign the memorandum of understanding and agreement between Susquehanna County Commissioners, Susquehanna County Drug Propagation, Susquehanna County School District, effective August first, twenty eighteen through July thirty-first, twenty nineteen, for the school-based probation program for the total sum of ten thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-seven cents for the allotted term. And that is not an expense to us, that's a revenue expense. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-eight.
I'll make a motion to approve item number twenty-eight.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item twenty-eight, enter gas lease with Epsilon Energy USA Incorporated, Houston, Texas, for ten acres located in Rush Township for five years at three thousand per acre and fifteen percent royalties. Questions or comments?
And is that county property?
Yes.
What is this? What's the address in Rush Township?
It's a county farm.
It's a county farm?
Yep.
And there's?
Used to be the county farm.
How many acres is it? Oh, ten acres. And then who is this Epsilon? I mean, have they drilled any wells in this county yet?
Epsilon, I believe, has not drilled any wells in this area. I don't know if they're a subsidiary of another company.
So why would you choose them over somebody else?
Well, because they're the ones that approach us. Nobody else approaches.
Nobody else approached you?
No.
So what kind of a lease is it? Is it a surface lease, or is it a?
No, a non-surface.
Non-surface lease, so they can't drill a well on there?
No.
But they can drill a well nearby and get your gas from underneath. So basically, you've got three thousand times ten, that's thirty thousand. They haven't drilled a well in the whole county.
Well, and I don't know if they are, or if somebody else drills them for them.
I've never heard of them. That's a whole new name there. Have you heard of it? Somebody?
No, wait, wait, this isn't a public debate, Vera. You got a question, or a point made?
Well, I saw her nod, and then this one nod, so.
All right.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, Carrie. Twenty-nine.
I'll make a motion to approve item number twenty-nine, it's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item twenty-nine, ratify a change order for CND weatherproofing in the amount of one thousand and thirteen dollars for installation of wood blocking on the county office building in Parpa. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item thirty.
I'll make a motion to approve item number thirty, it's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item thirty, ratify the following change orders with Wayne H. Lane for maintenance building in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars. Questions or comments?
And this is the maintenance building, the new one?
This is the new one.
And is that open yet, or done?
Yes, it's open and occupied.
It's open and occupied?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, Carrie. Thirty-one.
I make a motion to approve item thirty-one on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, sent by Commissioner Warren, to approve item thirty-one, to accept any price negotiated by the Tax Plan Bureau to sell free and clear from the twenty nineteen repository properties for the taxing district's written approval. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thirty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve item number thirty-two, it's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item thirty-two, to approve the following Tax Plan Bureau exoneration request as stated in the Milford Borough. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thirty-three. Thirty-three has a change, should not be from the Marcellus Legacy Fund, it should be from the General Fund.
I'll make a motion to approve that with the change of, from the General Fund to the wine item for ag land preservation in the General Fund.
And it should go back to the original number, forty thousand or anything?
Clear. I'll change it to forty thousand also. It used to be forty thousand before we started getting the Marcellus Legacy Fund, and then we just started using whatever we got in. So, thank you.
As Commissioner Warren made a motion.
Forty thousand from the General Fund.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item thirty-three, to ratify the transfer of forty thousand from the General Fund to the General Fund for twenty nineteen agricultural land preservation. Questions or comments?
You mean from the Marcellus Fund to the General Fund?
No. Cross out Marcellus Fund.
Cross that out?
Yep. From the General Fund to the General Fund.
So you're going from one fund to the same fund?
No, it's two different funds, but it's within the General Fund.
Two different funds?
The General Fund has lots of different funds on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thirty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve item number thirty-four, it's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item thirty-four, to support the Susquehanna County Farm Bureau and the Pennsylvania Farm Bureau by providing funding in the amount of twenty-one hundred dollars per elementary school for agricultural promotion in the classroom. Funding will come from the Marcellus Legacy Fund, and will go to the Pennsylvania Farm Bureau Foundation to support the agricultural promotion. This enhances our four-H program.
And this will only be transferred if a school uses it?
Questions or comments? Yes.
And what is the Marcellus Legacy Fund? Can you explain that one?
It's just another one of the legacy funds that's created out of the PUC for gas money that flows back into this area, and it can be used to help promote agriculture.
And this is money that comes from the PUC?
Well, it comes from the Act thirteen, PUC controls it.
Okay, so this is Act thirteen money?
No, it's not Act thirteen money, it's Marcellus Legacy money.
So where did this money come from?
It comes from all the Act thirteen money that's collected and sent to the PUC. And the PUC splits it all up and takes all their cuts out of it and sends it out, and then there's this little pot of money that goes out to every county, gets a little bit of this money.
So does that, do all the other counties have a Marcellus Legacy Fund besides us? So this is a specific fund, and it's primarily to do with farming, or rural?
Well, there's a few other things it can be used for. One of the things is promote agriculture, and that's what we're using it for.
So this is in addition to any Act thirteen money you're getting for others that you're using? This is money coming directly to this fund from the PUC?
This money comes through the PUC, it's not the PUC's money, it's our money that's sent to Harrisburg, they split it all up, and then they send this back into Marcellus Fund.
And what's the total amount in this fund right now?
Thirty-six thousand dollars.
And then, okay, and then when you said you're going to transfer, you're not transferring more money into it?
No.
So it's just the thirty-six whatever is in the fund?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good program for kids. Item thirty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve item number thirty-five, it's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item thirty-five, ratify signing the federal fiscal year twenty eighteen certifications and assurances for federal transit administration assistance programs. Questions or comments?
And what is that all about? Can you explain? What are you assuring and certifying?
We're assuring and certifying that the funding is used within the confines and appropriately for the transportation of people with medical assistance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item thirty-six.
I'll make a motion to approve item number thirty-six, it's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item thirty-six on the agenda, to approve Resolution twenty nineteen oh one, opposing changes to the Medical Assistance Transportation Program. Questions or comments?
So what are the changes?
Wait, not Vera, you know, you got, there's other people besides you in this room. Please raise your hand if you want to speak.
And I notice nobody else is usually talking except Stacy and me.
Please don't get to speak, put your hand up. Yes.
Do you know if any, if other counties are also joining in to do this?
Yes, there's several counties, probably every county in the state will be joining in on this.
I got an alert from CCAP yesterday.
Yeah, it's a big deal, it's a big problem, a huge problem. That's going to really cause a lot of havoc and grief in rural Pennsylvania. Okay, Vera, now you got a question?
Yes, I'm just wanting to know, what opposed changes are you talking about?
The state is looking to make a change to have a, they split the state up into three sections. We're in the eastern section, so it's from us all the way down through Philadelphia, and then there's a middle section and a western section. They are promoting to have one call center in each one of those areas for people to call in that need medical transportation. Currently, people call in, they call in locally to TreeHab, TreeHab handles our medical transportation. They want to take that away from us and have them call somebody that they want to select someplace in the state to handle this call center. So these people that are calling in won't have people that they're used to talking to. The people that are answering the phones won't know the areas in Susquehanna County, or the terrain, or the weather, or anything else. They won't know where the people live, where the dialysis are, where anything is, they'll have to look at Google Maps and hope they get something right, and we know that's not right. And, you know, the question will be whether they'll even continue to use our local carrier, which is TreeHab, or if they'll call somebody from another part of the county, or another county, or another state. So that's why we're opposing it. We don't want that changed.
I believe there are also issues with people, especially us, being a border county, being able to seek treatment in New York.
In New York State, right?
So.
Right. It's possible that they will not transfer to New York like we are now, which is a huge problem.
It's a huge problem for the people in the northern half of the counties.
This is one of those things that got kind of slid through under the radar, and, you know, it's one of those, one of the items that socially will have a huge impact on our elderly and on our people with needs of getting dialysis and other medical treatments, to the point where some people will probably not get the treatment, and unfortunately, it'll probably cost some people their lives. It's just a bad deal all the way around. All in favor?
Aye. Could I just comment about that, that it's actually in legislation, and Senator Baker is looking to pass legislation to put a hold on it, to table it, to look into it further. So we had one of our local senators working for us on that. Thank you.
Item thirty-seven.
I'll make a motion to approve item number thirty-seven, it's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve proclamation twenty nineteen oh one, proclaiming February twenty nineteen as American Art Month. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item thirty-eight. Note, the website Design Services bid was awarded to County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, the bid is unfilled. Okay. Public comment. Vera?
I want to make public, I was reading through the new updated Susquehanna County Comprehensive Plan. I'd like to know, who actually puts that together? You must be paying somebody to put that whole thing together. So who is this firm, or person?
I can't remember the name. It's a guy that has a company that's done it, he's done this plan for us a couple times now, does it for several counties throughout the state.
When I was looking through the book, you know, I don't see anything referred in the front of it, or the back, saying who compiled this, maybe I missed it. Wouldn't it be a good idea to put down the consulting firm or the consulting person, like, who created this, who put it together?
Well, they didn't, you know, again, don't misunderstand that consulting firm isn't the one that put all the material in there. That material came from residents, it came from township supervisors, municipalities, it came from a lot of different organizations. It's not something they put in themselves.
I understand that.
They just take all the material and regurgitate it and put it in a form so it's readable.
Right, but shouldn't they be listed, that they're the regurgitator and the former of the document? It might be a good idea to have, who is actually doing that?
Well, it's the county's document, and so the county is the one that is the one that's putting the document out.
And do you know what, you paid them? I mean, what is the cost for that?
Well, it went through a meeting, it's been through meetings, I don't have those numbers, but it did go through all the meetings.
And then I wanted to say that?
And we also, and so you understand that, you know, that was paid with grant money. Putting that plan together was paid with grant money.
Grant money?
Didn't come from local taxpayers.
Okay.
We were able to secure a grant to pay for it.
All right, I wanted to mention that on page seven of the Comprehensive Plan, it's called numeral, Roman numerals five one one hyphen seven, it has a whole chart, employment by industry in Susquehanna County, so I wanted to make public that the gas industry is listed as only one point six percent of the employees of our county are being used, one point six percent do they have jobs. So this is like such a small number, because it mentions here, you know, under oil and gas, quarrying and mining, so when you subtract the different things from two thousand and seven, two thousand and seventeen. So I want the public to know that even though the gas industry likes to parade around, like, they're giving us so many jobs, and they're so important in our county, they only account for one point six percent of the jobs that our residents have.
Okay, but be careful, you know, how you interpret, how you manipulate the data.
Yeah, so how would you interpret?
Well, as you so kindly manipulated to say there's only 1.6% of the people working for the gas industry, that may be true that there's only 1.6 working directly for the gas industry, but how many people are working for other companies that support the gas industry? That you don't have.
Well, you don't have it then on this list, would it be on this list? Of about ten, fifteen different industries?
Well, depends on the industry, how many of those industries support the, the gas industry?
All right, so there might be some other industries, but I wanna let people know directly, the gas industry only employs 1.6% as of two thousand seventeen, which is the figures in this, in this particular...
Well, that's two thousand seventeen, I do know today there's at least a couple hundred jobs available, if they could get people that wanna work.
Right, and they can't fill them, and there's a reason for it, 'cause when I talk to gas workers, they're not happy with the conditions, the long hours, the long days, six days a week, twelve hours a day.
Listen, I talk to gas workers, and, you know, listen, it's not all just about that. You know, there are a lot of people that work for the gas industry that are fine with the hours, fine with the stuff, it's just whether people wanna work or not.
Well, it could be also from what I've heard, that it's difficult conditions plus the risk involved. It's not a great job market for the people here, but just, I wanted to make that comment, so that's my opinion.
Again, that is your opinion, we appreciate that.
That's my opinion, yes.
Any other comments or public comments? Yes Vera?
I have something on the roads, I'm concerned about the roads, that even though you've, the county has fixed these roads the past two or three years, like Route 71...
Okay, now stop right there, again, you've gotta get your facts right. The county doesn't fix roads, we have nothing to do with the roads.
Who, you mean, the county commissioners?
County commissioners have nothing to do with the roads.
All right, so I just wanna make a comment that the roads are difficult to drive on. PennDOT is involved, of course, seven oh six is breaking down, South, twenty-nine South is breaking down. A number of the state roads are all breaking down with loads of potholes. They can't seem to handle all the trucks that we have, the industry trucks that keep increasing every year, and this year they increased again. So is there anything we can do to get more money? I spoke to PennDOT, one of the officials there, they need more, maybe more funds, something to keep, they can't keep up with the conditions here.
Okay, so let's review the facts, because again, you know, we have to get to the real facts of what's going on, because we always seem to manipulate the facts and try to convince people of a story that is not true. So the first fact is, is the maintenance budget for PennDOT has not changed in like the last ten years. So that means they get the same money for maintenance they've got the last ten years, they don't, they've never gotten an increase. Now, with that said, at one time we had three hundred workers in this county for PennDOT, today we have sixty-nine. So the problem is, is when you have a budget and you have to maintain your budget, and when a new truck ten years ago cost ninety-five thousand dollars and a new truck today costs two hundred thousand dollars, the problem is, is when you wanna buy a new truck, how many people do you have to lose in order to buy a new truck? So as our numbers go down, we employ less because there's no funding from the state for PennDOT to hire anybody. And we continue to fight with PennDOT and legislators saying that they need to get more funding into this area. Until they separate the budgets, which we've requested several times to separate the budgets from winter maintenance and summer maintenance, because we have far larger costs for winter maintenance in Susquehanna County than they do in York County. So a lot of our maintenance budget goes to taking care of the roads in the wintertime. The summertime work, they only have so much money left in the budget to do the work, they only have so much equipment. Now, the flood that came in August, they did a pretty darn good job getting roads back to drivable compared to what they were when the flood came. So hats off to them, they brought in a lot of subcontractors, spent a lot of money. It was tens of millions of dollars that they spent to get these roads back so they're at least drivable. We just had a huge thaw here a couple, a couple weeks ago. A lot of the roads are failing because of the, the freeze thaw cycle, and there's a lot of problems. Seven oh six, right out here, that they paved two years ago or three years ago. It's failing, and it's failing because the material that was used did not meet the standard. Now, it's great that PennDOT got money back from the contractor that did it, but it still didn't fix our road, we still have a road that's falling apart, it'll fall apart for ten more years before they pave it again, before it can get into the cycle. There's only so much money, because there's no money coming from Harrisburg. So in order to get more money, we have to get the legislators and the governor to say it's time to make a change in the funding mechanism for PennDOT. We need to separate out winter maintenance from summer maintenance. We need to separate out and take care of the, the dirt roads that they have as well as the blacktop roads. They have bonded a lot of roads, the roads they bonded that the gas company has done damage to, the gas company has been required to fix them or pay to fix them. So that has taken place, that's why a lot of the roads are bonded now, so they can get that revenue. So, but the bottom line is, is there's not enough guys in the area, there's not enough equipment in the area, there's not enough money in the area. They've already said it will take them six years with their crews just to take and do the ditching and clean out the, the culverts that need to be done, it'll take them six years to do this county, which is totally unacceptable.
Right.
So, although the commissioners have nothing to do with state roads, they're state roads and we have no input on it, we do, and I do, and the commissioners do, express our concerns to our representatives and to PennDOT. We have reached out several times to people at PennDOT, at the central office. I sit on a transportation committee in Towanda. We talked with the central office, we talked with the district's office, we meet with the district office over here and trying to promote getting something done with these roads. So as far as what the public can do, the best thing you can do is get on the phone every day and call that one eight hundred fix road and report every pothole you see, and do it every day until they finally fill the pothole or fix the road. If you call once and don't call again, the chances of it getting done are not gonna happen. If you call them every day, if enough people start calling every day, then they'll finally figure out a way to do it. And I would recommend, listen, you know, Secretary Richards has a Facebook page, I'd recommend going on her Facebook page and, and posting some things on her Facebook page for her. And ask if she knows where Susquehanna County is, I can tell you that she does not know where Susquehanna County is. She has been invited to this county on numerous occasions by our senators and our representatives. They've sent letters requesting her to come here and see how deplorable these roads are and the condition they're in. She has not responded once to any one of our representatives or our senators.
And she's secretary of what?
Secretary of PennDOT. Now, I can tell you this, she is headed to go in for budget review in front of our senators and House of Representatives, and they're gonna make a big issue of it in the middle of the, her budget presentation. So maybe at that point she might be able to figure out where Susquehanna County is.
And when is the budget review, do you have a date?
They're in that process now.
Any public hearings for that budget review?
In Harrisburg. Yes sir.
The additional tax that was put on gasoline, none of those funds are coming back to the county?
Well, you know, listen, they tell you that, you know, and, and getting an accounting of the money is a problem. They tell you, well, and there's also Act thirteen money that goes to PennDOT. PennDOT's gotten, I can't remember how many millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars from the Act thirteen. And the first thing they'll say is, well, well, we've got some gas money, so we're gonna use that in the area. But what we feel is happening is, they bring the gas money in and use the gas money to fix the road, but the money that was supposed to fix the road, they've now taken and moved it someplace else. So I don't think we're getting any extra, and there's no accountability, no records to say, here, you know, this is, this is how, how much is being spent on these roads, this is what's gonna get done. Because what they'll do is they'll give us a map here in about a month of the, of the roads in Susquehanna County that they're gonna work on for the year. Then all of a sudden, it's like, okay, well, you were gonna chip and stone this whole road. Yeah, well, now we just chipped and stoned a little four-foot section and that was it. Or you were gonna pave this road, well, yeah, but we're gonna wait till next year 'cause we're gonna do something else, so we, we kick it out. Well, every time they kick it out, where's the money go? Nobody can answer the question. So, and again, and I've said from time to time, listen, the problem is not our local PennDOT workers. We got some of the best workers in the state working for, in PennDOT in this county. But just imagine how frustrated they are when they go out to a bridge to work on a bridge and they need a pump to pump the water out, and the pump they give them isn't even power enough to pump the water out. They've gotta sit in a truck and wait for a day for the water to pump down because the pump they got doesn't pump enough. Or they send them out to patch a road and they, and they give them the pickup truck with the coal patch and the shovel. They don't even have a hand tamp or anything that they can tamp it down, they can just throw it in the hole, drive over it with a truck and hope it stays. So those guys are completely frustrated, they say, listen, it, it's crazy, this is the worst it's ever been. And so it's not the workers, it's the administration, starting in Harrisburg, coming on down line. That's the problem with PennDOT. And when somebody finally wakes up and does something in Harrisburg, then we'll see some relief, yes, I'm sorry.
Uh, who has, who, who's in charge of water and how no one can touch creeks and rivers?
Okay, so, and that's a fallacy too, and that's not true. You can touch creeks and rivers and streams and all of that. Rivers are a little bit more difficult, uh, when you get into a body of water that large than the Army Corps of Engineer and all the agencies have to get involved, but creeks and streams, or creeks and streams, I should say. Creeks and streams, I'm sorry, I'm native Susquehanna County, it's always a creek to me, but... The creeks and streams, whenever there's an event, like we just had this flooding in August, so there was an event. So when there's an event like that, people can get emergency permits to clean out the creeks and streams. All they have to do is call DEP, DEP will come, give them a permit, there's no cost for it, they can go in and, and take care of it. When it's passed, I think it's ninety days past the event, when it's ninety days past the event, then it's a different story. Then you have to go to conservation and DEP, and then you have to get a permit through those agencies. And, and, you know, unfortunately, there is some cost involved in the permits, I don't think it's astronomical, the cost is not that great, but you can get the permits. Now, at the same time, you gotta figure out whether it's a, you know, a fishing stream, whether it's on the list or not, then there's only certain times of the year you can get in and do things. But the fallacy that you can never, the statement that you can never touch a stream or a creek is not true, you can. The issue we have in this area is, who's gonna pay for it and who's gonna do it? The, unfortunately, the owner of the creek is the owner of the property. So whoever owns the creek is the one that's responsible for keeping the creek clean. Now, I will go on to say there are some townships and that do go a little bit farther, and if people are having problems, the township does go onto the private land and, and do things to help out. Now, it's not a lot of them because there's a huge liability, township goes onto your land, something happens, township's liable, workers are liable, guy falls on your property, falls down, you're liable. So, but there are some townships, I can tell you that Franklin Township rented a big, big excavator in August and went through it and, and cleaned everything up and did what they had to to do it. And I know Justin Township did some stuff, I know the Milford Township did what they could do, so there are some that do it.
Well, thank you for clearing that up because that makes a little bit more sense, but in my mind, that has a lot to do with the road condition.
Absolutely, absolutely. We have a huge problem and it starts with our drainage. Our drainage is the biggest problem we have in this county. The drainage problem comes from creeks, it also is the ditches on the side of the road, the pipes under the roads that are plugged and don't work. We go up two sixty-seven up there by the Smoke and Joe's, just for the county line, there's a sluice that goes down the road, it's jammed full of stuff, the water won't go through it. And I've been screaming at PennDOT, you gotta get this replaced, you gotta get this replaced. Down on thirty thirteen, down in Springville, there's a sluice pipe that's all plugged up and it's just ripping up the ground up down there, and it's gotta get replaced. And, and those are actions that need to be done, so you're absolutely right. We've gotta clean the ditches, we've gotta make sure they're cut like they're supposed to be, we've gotta make sure the sluice pipes are kept clean. You know, they did this seven oh six, ran down through them, did this seven oh six years ago, put all these new sluice pipes in, put these drain boxes in on the sides, and then took off. Two days later, they're half full of mud and dirt, because there's nothing to stop it. So then they had to come back, clean them all out, flush them and put some riprap in and things to try. But if you don't, you know, any township supervisor will tell you, if you don't maintain those culverts, those drainage pipes, if you don't maintain them, they plug up and then you've got huge problems. But, so it, it's a combination of all that, it's a combination of the hundreds of trees that come down in a, in a flash flood that end up laying in the creek and then nobody wants to go clean them out, and they just sit there, and then the next high water comes up, they get caught, they go down, they get caught on something, now we've rerouted the creek, and now we're taking somebody's lawn out. And I've said to the Chesapeake Bay Commission, listen, you guys cry about the sediment in the Chesapeake Bay, we're the culprits, we're the culprits because all of our rivers and creeks need to be stabilized and taken care of in order to stop that. So if you wanna take and send up ten or twenty million dollars out of the Chesapeake Bay Commission, we'll put that money to use to go in and stabilize the, the creeks and the, and the stream walls and all that so you don't get all that sediment out of everybody's yard. So...
And fix the roads.
And fix the roads.
And again, it goes back to manpower.
And again, it goes back to manpower. So yeah, so that's kinda where it is, yes Vera?
And then, you know, since you mentioned tens of millions was used for the roads or for, for PennDOT to repair the roads because of the flooding. So, so shouldn't some of the flood money be reimbursed to them? Because they, they mentioned, the official from PennDOT mentioned that that money was then used because of the floods. But if it wasn't the floods, they could use it for the regular roads, so can't they get flood money to reimburse them?
Well, they will get flood money, you know, we got approved for public assistance.
And you'll go to PennDOT?
And it will go to PennDOT, PennDOT is like a hundred mil, I think it was like a hundred million dollars they put in for the whole state of Pennsylvania. So they will get, you know, the major portion of that money back from, from FEMA and through FEMA to take and refund them for all that, that work. The townships that have gone out and done flood repairs, that have filed their FEMA reports and, and their mitigation reports, that funding flows, flows back through. I mean, unfortunately, it takes time, you know, they don't write you a check, you don't go in and say, here, here's my, here's my bill, and they write you a check, it, it is government, you know, don't forget they shut down half the time anymore. But, you know, it does take them a while to get the checks out and pay people. Our children's youth services, I think we're probably a, a year behind at least on that for them sending us checks on that that they owe us for. So it just takes them a while to get the money out.
Now, as far as being bonded, the roads are bonded, some of them, and like state route thirty, twenty-three in Dimic supposedly is bonded. Cabot has been pounding that road with their trucks, that's the, one of the worst roads I've seen, and they can't keep up with the potholes and the condition of the patching and the resurfacing that's needed for that road. So even with the bonding, it's not enough, so...
Well, don't confuse the bonding with fixing the road, the bonding is only a, a financial mechanism. The bonding creates your financial mechanism to, to give you the money to get the roads fixed. That's all the bonding does. Now, once the road is damaged under the bonding, you know, they either have to fix it or they have to pay to get it fixed. So it's not a question as to, you know, if the bonding's working or not, the bonding works. Question is not, right now, is the problem, we're in the middle of winter still. You know, a week ago it was sixty degrees, a week before that it was fifteen below zero.
Well, I just wanna...
Today, we got all this snow and ice and, you know, the weather conditions, especially on roads, will dictate what kind of repairs can get done.
Well, I, I've been complaining about that road, besides the residents of that road, besides the winter, in the spring and the summer, and Cabot has not been able to keep up with the damage that's being done on that road because they're the main user, from what I can see, of the trucks.
And I would call you to call PennDOT and talk to PennDOT.
Yeah, I did, I called them, I called them regularly, and I tell them which roads need to be done and then ask why. And then I'd like to make a comment that the planning commission, one of the things they can take into consideration is not approve any more trucking companies into our county that will add like they just approved Springville, eighty trucks per day, pounding the roads, that if we have too many trucks, can we curtail the amount so that our roads can handle it and we can keep up with the repairs? If we can't keep up with the repairs, then they should put on hold any new companies that come in with trucks.
Well, again, it's, you know, that's your view, and I appreciate that, but it is interstate commerce and it's controlled by PennDOT and the state roads, that's not controlled by our planning commission. So with that said, you know, again, that's a state issue. If the state wants to post all the roads and say that no trucks are allowed on the roads, well, by gosh, they can do that. But the county can't do that.
You can't do it even with a zoning ordinance or some kind of adnus ordinance?
You know, we keep chasing this rabbit around the hole, Vera, about, and I understand, but what, you know, and now that you wanna start down this road, let's, let's finish this conversation. You know, the whole purpose of, of what was going on today with the planning commission was, and that you did wanna bring up, and we've had other phone calls, I had a phone call yesterday, is that the, the push is, is to get the individual that you guys wanted on and other individuals that you want on, and your group wants everybody else off, so that these people can take and create all these ordinances and regulations to take and hamper the industry and shut the industry down. So, you know, you didn't bother to, to speak about that, again, I had the phone call yesterday from the lady and, you know, and she wants everybody off the planning commission and all those people put on to pass all these regulations and rules. Again, this all goes back to what the municipalities and, and the public wanted. In twenty twelve, there was a meeting at the county that the county commissioners called all the municipalities to. And it was about the Act thirteen money and gas drilling and all of that. The way the Act thirteen law was written was simply this. The Act thirteen law said a county could opt in for the, all the municipalities. If the county didn't opt in, the municipalities themselves could opt in, and if sixty percent of those municipalities opted in, I think it was sixty percent, sixty or seventy, opted in, then everybody in the county was in regardless, it didn't matter. So what the commissioner said, well, we're not gonna force anybody to do anything they don't wanna do. We called all the municipalities to the county, and in two thousand twelve, we had a meeting downstairs across the street and every municipality was there, and we posed a question, what do you want us to do? Doesn't matter to us, I live in town, I couldn't really care less. You know, what do you people wanna do? They're your municipalities, this is, unfortunately, and a lot of people get confused, this is a commonwealth, it's not a state, it's a commonwealth. Commonwealths are different than states. Commonwealths, the highest form of government is the lowest form of government, meaning the municipalities have the final say in what's going on. That's why the Act thirteen legislation was written the way it was, so that nobody at the county level or anybody above could dictate to the municipalities what they could or could not do. So as a commonwealth, all the municipalities came, a hundred percent of the municipalities say, we wanna be in. We're in this, we wanna be in, okay, you're in it. It was not the commissioners that sat here and said, well, we're gonna do this. It was the public that came together and said, we wanna do this. Now, I understand, and there was one person there that was not a municipal leader that said, you know, listen, this, this might be an issue. Listen, I don't think anybody understood the magnitude, what was gonna happen, what it was gonna do on either direction. All the good it's done, the, the bad things it's done, nobody understood any of that. Would the, would the, would the question be different today, doesn't, don't know, doesn't matter at this point. We're in, we're in. So we're in this right now. So the question is, is we're in this, the industry is here, yes, they've sent one point five billion dollars to the state of Pennsylvania out of the Act thirteen money they've collected. And probably another three hundred million dollars this year will go to Harrisburg to be distributed out. So, plus another billion dollars that went to property owners and to landowners. So, we're in this because that's what the public wanted. And I realize some people in the public right now, and especially this one little group that you're a part of, wants to stop everything. And I, and I respect that, that's your opinion and that's, that's your call if that's what you believe in. But our job here as commissioners is to support all the public, not just a little portion of the public. is to support all the public, not just a little portion of the public. If all the public wants something, then that's what we go with. And as far as zoning and all those issues, we've talked about that many times here. We do not have county-wide zoning. The communities, the municipalities have said time and time again, we don't want you telling us what we can do in our communities. We don't want you telling us that you're going to put an industrial zone in our community and a commercial zone in somebody else's. We will decide how we will zone our own community. And there are several communities that have zoning in this county, and they control what goes on in their facility, in their areas. There are several other communities, and I think Billy Bain was part of them, that did studies and tried to do coalitions and do all this zoning, the northern, northwestern group, and there was one over on the eastern side. When they finally got into it, the public said, no, we don't want this.
And when was the no? How long ago? 2012?
You have to ask the municipalities. Again-
2012, so we need another-
Again, the point you've missed in the whole thing-
Of course, I missed everything.
I know I'm speaking now. The point you've missed in the whole thing is this is a commonwealth. If the municipalities want something, they can do it. If they don't want something, then they don't have to do it. And they represent their people, and they know what they want. It's not our job here to sit here and tell everybody in their community what they can and can't do. Anybody else? Bill?
Yeah. Well, a couple of things needs to be brought up. Northern tier coalition, I think we had 13 municipalities involved. And the township supervisors and borough councilmen agreed we needed zoning. The public totally disagreed. And of course, you've got to go with what the public thinks. We could have enacted it, then they would have thrown us all out of office and disinacted it. Another thing, there's at least one thing that us as individuals can do as far as the roads. I don't know how many times as a township supervisor I called, got called out with a plugged sluice pipe. Go out, there's a kid's beach ball or basketball or something like that in there that caused the jam. Just pay attention to what's going on at the sluice pipe in front of your house. The township or the state can't be looking at every sluice pipe. Usually, it's some dumb thing like that. Couple of branches fall off the tree in front of your house, the flood comes along and packs them into the end of the sluice pipe. Next thing, you got the whole road washed down. So that's little things, not all of us can go out and, and pull the branches out, but a, a lot of us can. It's a simple thing you can do yourself.
Well, Bill, you're absolutely right. You know, there are some things that some people can do, if they have the capabilities. You know, everybody has the capability of picking up the phone. I think that the problem that a lot of people have had is people have called and complained so much that they just gave up and said, you know, I keep calling, but nobody does anything. And of course, I think that's what PNDOT-Harrisburg wants. They want you to give up and not call anymore.
Yeah.
So that's why I say, you know, listen, if you got five minutes a day, make that phone call every day for the next, next year, and just agitate them to death. And if you know how to get on Facebook, and you can find Secretary Richards' Facebook page, you know, when she puts a comment up about how great PNDOT's doing and how wonderful they are, don't hesitate to say, hey, do you know where Susiana County is? Maybe you ought to come here and see how great you are here.
I wrote a letter to Secretary Richards back in November.
Did you get a response?
Well, she gave it to one of her deputies, and it was primarily about the bridge on 29 in Franklin Forks. And the response, you know, he's totally uninformed. He doesn't know what the situation there. He just repeats what somebody told him.
1-800-FIX-ROAD.
9 to 5, don't call any weekends.
When did Franklin Forks supervisors clean up the creeks with those new bulldozers? When did they do that? Yeah, I heard you mention that.
Was it Liberty or not? I thought it was Franklin.
And what do I, what did you do?
Well, Liberty did it, and Franklin Forks did it too. Franklin Forks, it was right after the flood.
Right after the flood?
Yeah.
So we'll see how it works out for the next heavy rains?
It all depends on what's upstream from what they do. That's the problem. You know, the problem is you clean a section of creek out, or creek, and whatever is upstream from that, if that doesn't get cleaned out, you know, they just did on DeBoer Street, they just, PNDOT did a great job. They went in, cleaned the creek, put the creek back, put riprap in. I mean, it looks like a million bucks. You go up about 50 feet from there, there's probably at least 100 trees down laying in, in the creek. It's waiting to wash down for the next rain. And when they come down and get into that new section, they'll jam it up, and it'll eat all that back out and be gone again. All that money they spend's gone. So, I mean, it's trying to get people in authority at Chesapeake Bay and other places to understand, listen, we could fix a lot of your problems with the sediment going into the rivers and going south into these bays if you would give us the help up here. It's great you want to spend all these millions and billions of dollars down in the Chesapeake and every place else to keep taking all the dirt out. Well, if you'd send the money up here and we'd fix this up here, you wouldn't get the dirt down there.
There you go.
And who, and who can we appeal to about that? The Chesapeake Bay?
Chesapeake Bay. Go online, let's see who's on Chesapeake Bay Commission, send them a letter, and see what they have to say.
And what about the governor, too?
Yeah. Good luck with that one. You know, and, and the last thing I'll say is, you know, and it was brought up today, and, and we talked about the planning commission and, and, you know, whether the person was on making videos or not. But again, what you didn't say is that one of the other persons made twice as many videos the other way. So, you know, again, at the planning commission, we don't care what people's personal opinions are. We care about what they're going to do and how they're going to take and, and support the, the rules and regulations that we have. So would that accept a motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry, just a quick comment I was going to ask you. Just like to make a point maybe you can elaborate on, this new natural gas advantage downstream of that township when we have the extra, this is actually expressed up here. And, you know, there are going to be, I guess, like 100 trucks a day coming out of there in the future when they get fully operational and everything. And yeah, that's going to be a convenience. But the biggest reason for that is because of their small infrastructure and people in New York don't want the pipeline.
Right.
New York needs the gas, so it's going to go by truck, which is maybe not the best thing, but they're going to get it one way or another.
Well, and that's this lady I talked to yesterday. She said, you know, that was one of the comments that she made. And I, and she says, well, thank God New York State didn't put the pipe in the ground. Well, why would you say that? Now we've got all the trucks. I'd rather have a single pipe in the ground or two pipes in the ground than have 300 trucks a day going up the road. I mean, and, and of course, her response is, well, everybody has to just stop using oil and natural gas and all this stuff. Well, that, that's a great thought, you know, that, listen, that's a great pie in the sky kind of idea. The problem is, find me a light switch you can flick that'll do that overnight. Because how many years did it take us? Heck, six years ago, we were still burning, burning coal in this building. How many years does it take to change technology and get technology to a point that it can take and replace another technology? You know, and how long will it take before nuclear is obsolete? You know, nuclear, they say, is still one of the safest, but the problem is the cost to create it now is too high. They're talking about wind and solar, but they've got huge problems now with some of the wind and solar farms that they're trying to deal with. So the technology's not there yet. It's growing, it's getting better, and technology, listen, I'd love to be able to have the day that I don't have to have and pay for gas or oil or heat or anything like that, that we, we, there's another technology there that we can get it that's cost-effective. But we're not there until all the scientists with the big brains can figure this out.
On that, you know, we, we vacation in the Thousand Islands often, you know, that's kind of like our go-to vacation spot. And on the Canadian side, you'll see there are a lot of wind farms. However, on the US side of the river, there is a huge backlash. Iberdola's there trying to install wind, and there, you know, I'll always, of course, pick up newspapers when I'm there, but the backlash up there is similar to the backlash here in regards to the industry as far as-
Well, you know, that's the problem. It doesn't matter what industry you look at, there's pros and cons to it. I mean, if you talk to people that live next to these wind farms, I mean, they are not happy people. The constant humming from the machines, the constant birds dying, they, if you're in the northern part of the country, the ice flying off the blades, I mean, there's all kinds of issues and problems. The solar panels, the, you know, the issues they have with some of those, the connections, the batteries, you know, other stuff. Yeah. So there's all kinds, it doesn't matter what technology we have, there's always goods and bads to it. You know, we've never found, you know, somebody said, well, we should use geothermal. I can show you a school that put like 20 geothermal pumps in the ground, they can't even get enough heat out of them to heat the building.
Montroseboro had put geothermal in their new building, and, and that, and I think they've had to switch over to something else.
So, so the ideas and the concepts are good, but the technology's not there to do it. Now hopefully, the technology will get there someday. And we'll have, you know, it'd be nice to have a technology where we can have heating in cars and everything else that don't produce any type of greenhouse gases that's going to continue to deteriorate the planet and warm the planet. I mean, that's, that's wonderful, but it's not going to happen overnight. It's going to take time, it's going to take university students, kids that are growing up, that are very intelligent, that are going to be able to take things and develop this stuff. Just like they've done with some of these miracle drugs now, where they can, you know, cure diseases we thought would never cure. Unfortunately, the cost is, some of these cures are a million dollars. So, I mean, it's getting there, it's just going to take some more time to get there.
I just want to say a quick comment about pipelines. I don't want to just blame New York for preventing pipelines. Massachusetts, New England also, and also Pennsylvania. There's several pipeline groups of citizens that are wanting no pipelines, no more pipelines, and it's not just New York. So Pennsylvanians are fighting it also.
I understand. But all those people still want to have natural gas and heat their homes and drive their cars and do all that stuff.
No, they don't. That's a, that's a-
So they're going to walk the rest of their life?
No, they don't want it. They want to start somewhere. You got to start somewhere, you got to stop it. You can't just-
Well, you can't just turn the switch and say, stop. You know, we're not going to have natural gas or-
Well, they're saying no to any more pipelines. You got to start somewhere. Otherwise, it just continues with the fossil fuel industry inundating us.
Do you know how many people are homeless and don't have heat and, you know, let's, you know, if we can get gas to some of these homes and people can eat-
We had plenty of heat before the gas industry came into this county. We had heat. We were able to heat our homes, we were able to live before they entered here 10 years ago. They're not our saviors.
Well, again, that's your opinion.
That's right, it's my opinion.
All right, motion to adjourn.
I'll stand by.
I'll second it.
All right, all favor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.
When you said noon, you weren't far off. What time is it?